Thank you.
Alright, it is now eleven oh three and we're going to uh start today's regular session. Roll call please, Michelle Walter. Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Here. Here.
Brant.
Here.
Here.
Uh Paul.
Yes, here. Uh moment uh again for reflection on today's actions. You can please rise with pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Do we have any public comments on items not on today's agenda? Alright, seeing none. Uh item three, oh I'm sorry, item number one. See that little April Fool's joke? Hey, you know what's going on, didn't you? Uh do we have a uh a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or is amended? So make a motion with item eight C being tabled until next week. Send your votes, second to that?
Oh, you second.
Sure.
Yes.
Alright. All in fi- all in favor of the amended uh agenda removing item eight, tabling item eight C for one week? Say aye.
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 Both same side, motion carries.
I'm sorry, leave me the second on that.
Uh little uh proclamation, month of April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
She's here, she stayed.
I will read it on their behalf. Uh whereas sexual assault affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and whereas in addition to the immediate physical and emotional cost, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. And whereas sexual assault can be devastating not only to the survivor but also for the family, friends, and community of the survivor. And whereas since no one, single person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, sexual assault, support the survivors and their significant others, and support those agencies providing services to survivors. Now therefore, we the Board of Supervisors in and for Black Hawk County on behalf of all staff and citizens of Black Hawk County do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty five as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In Black Hawk County, Iowa, and encourage all citizens to learn more about preventing sexual violence.
Please approve.
Second.
Motion and second, me.
Yeah, I mean, I can just add, I was a sexual assault advocate with Ritter View Center. We provide one hundred percent free confidential services to those impacted by sexual violence. So that also includes family members, loved ones. Uh we provide pedophilicacy, illegal pedophilicacy, general pedophilia, and peer counseling. So if you know of anyone that might benefit, this all could have happened yesterday, it could have also happened twenty thirty years ago. So we talk about anyone that kind of whatever they need.
She stayed.
She left.
Thank you for your work.
Yes, she stayed, I'm glad.
Yeah, and thank you for sticking around.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Usually put your right smack down the middle. One, two, three. Okay, another one, one.
But yeah, don't forget yours.
That's right, yeah.
She does a social media post.
One, two. Great.
Thank you.
Good timing.
Yeah.
Thanks. No, we took half a minute, huh?
Yeah, exactly.
Is it okay?
You've got a free civic lesson out of it. Alright, uh item four, claims and payments. It's a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and direct to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as allowed. So move.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Whedon, please.
Good morning, board.
Good afternoon.
Yeah. Our total payment today would be seven hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Out of that, the sixty forty fund is three thousand five hundred ninety-seven cents. I'm sorry, three thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh we are making bill payments a little higher than normal this week. We are catching up two months' payments to Naff Care. So that's four hundred and ten thousand. And we also are making some um construction payment to Don Gardner Construction for the Rotary Reserve Siding Windows, sixty-nine thousand, nine sixty-seven fifty. Making some payments on the playgrounds at the various campgrounds for just about eighty thousand, a hundred and sixty dollars. I think those are all the larger unusual payments today when everything appears to be in order unless you have questions.
Thank you so much. As a roll call, please.
Brant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item five, receive project updates from department heads or elected officials.
Good morning, board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. The county roads are in pretty good shape. We're not seeing too many uh soft spots or frostbills yet. Hopefully they'll stay away. Uh we are starting to get into the swing of spring. We are starting some culvert replacements on a road that we are surfacing next year. We are also starting our mild rack already. And that is in the south-central portion of the county right now. And then our dust control vendors are getting lined up. And we did place a notice in the newspaper a week or so ago to alert uh county residents if they want dust control, they need to contact. Look on our website and they need to contact one of the vendors who are, who are approved by us. I also wanted to let you know about Senate File seventy-three and that is a proposal that would increase the speed limits, the speed limits that are fifty-five miles per hour, which are many of our secondary roads, you know, unless we're near a city. That the speed limit is fifty-five miles per hour. The proposal is to increase them to sixty miles per hour. Uh we've given some cost data to our affiliate, the Iowa County Engineers Association, for cost to upgrade those. A sticker would be permitted by legislation. We are really not in favor of a sticker, just getting it to match. The existing signing would be very difficult, it's an H sign. So we would propose to replace all of our, all of our fifty-five mile per hour signs. We have about sixty-five of those signs. We're estimating that cost would be about eighty-five hundred dollars to replace all of those signs. Can I answer any other questions? Any questions at this time? Thank you.
That's good.
Morning again, Mike Henderson, Director of Black Hawk County Conservation. Just got a couple of pictures I want to show. Okay, um very quickly, um uh some, some things that are happening today. I mentioned, uh we have opened our campgrounds today. Um April first was the day we were going to open. Yes, it's very cold. Um people can use them if they'd like. Uh we do not have showers and, and a lot of the water and restroom facilities turned on. We'll wait until the weather is good for that. But uh, but it does kind of roll us into the camping season and um so that's moving forward. Um also, the beginning of April, April and May are uh big field trip times for our Harton Reserve uh Nature Center and our education staff. Uh so the, with the field trip kicking off, um they will, they will serve uh during that two-month period a little over twenty-five hundred kids in the community with field trips. Um that, that will include every second grade student and every fifth grade student in the Waterloo school systems. So um we do uh, we do cover a lot of ground there, but that's all taking place now. And then I wanted to just give a very quick uh update with Casey Lake. Haven't given you much here lately because it's kind of been sitting flat. Um contractor will be back here uh probably this week, if not next, with uh just some minor grading and seeding to finish up. But we are catching water, as you can see. Um you'll see uh over to the top, uh some of the, the uh, up in this area, the little rock piles that are there. Um we're gaining water, um no significant snowfall, one significant rainstorm of about an inch and twenty hundreds here a few weeks ago. But we're gaining water. And um uh there are a couple of uh, couple of different views of that. That's from the dam. And right along those rock piles that you see there, uh that is, there is a, a basically a, a canal cut up through there. That will be the deepest part of the lake when it's filled. It'll be about twenty-eight, twenty-nine feet, something like that. So with that being said, I was notified two weeks ago by the fisheries biologist that they are ready to stock the lake, uh which is huge. We wanted to get those fish in there so that they can start growing. Um the only setback we have right now is that um it will be stocked with catfish, bass, and bluegills. The only thing we're hurrying right now is they do not have the supply of bluegills that they need due to flooding on the Mississippi River last spring and summer, which is where their fish hatcheries are. Um so they're in the process of trying to locate those fish. I told them that if they can't locate those fish, um one of the options was to wait until fall. And I said I didn't want to wait until fall because I don't want to give up another year of, of growing season for those fish. They'll grow very quickly. So um I'm waiting to hear back from them. They have found some possible areas they can get those bluegills. If not, we will work through private hatcheries. And I told them that we would raise the funds um to pay for those fish and, and we will. So anyway, um and that's just one more shot of the lake. So we're catching water, a couple of good uh spring thunderstorms would be really, really nice. But it is filling and so um we're very happy with that. So with that, any questions at all for me?
Any estimate of what it would cost even for the fish?
Yes. Um and we're looking at, with bluegills, they want to stock eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty-three inch fish with the bluegills. Um we have looked on the private uh, to private hatcheries in case we have to purchase those. They are between fifty-five cents to eighty-five cents per fish. So it's significant. But uh we have uh wonderful, wonderful supporters here in Black Hawk County and we feel like um there will be a very quick story written. If the fisheries guys tell me they can't get those fish, and we'll know here in the next week or so, uh we'll write a story and I will almost guarantee that donors will come and they will help. And that's going to be our goal, to raise that money to pay for those fish.
Mike has a thought on that. Could we host a fishing competition? And then everybody just brings the fish to.
Wonderful, but the fisheries guys were very clear. Wherever we buy those fish, and I said, well, you guys need to help me do that, if that's what you're worried about. They inspect everything that goes into that lake. They want to know what they're putting in there. Because right now, we're starting from scratch. It's very, very pure and they want to keep it that way, as in keeping those, those rough fish species out of there and different things like that. We will get that no matter what. Uh the public is always more than willing to help stock with the fish they catch somewhere else and they'll throw it in there. It happens everywhere. It's, you, you can't stop it, but we're uh, yeah, they're very adamant about keeping this a pretty clean uh, pretty clean lake to start with anyway, so.
Alright, are there any invertebrates that would be stocked in there or do they just? I know that they're more into running water for the most part, but I guess.
There, there wouldn't be anything like that. Um I, I think, you know, those show up, um they'll be there. And um uh it's, it's gonna, we're, we're very much looking forward to kicking this thing off. We are doing a program on the seventeenth of April with the Cedar River Watershed Management and the, the uh, I'm gonna get this wrong, East Central Iowa COG. Um they're coming up from Cedar Rapids. We're going, they're going to utilize the Lakeview Lodge and we're going to do tours of the lake. Because they really want to see what kind of water quality work we've done there. This is an educational uh lab, quite honestly. We are getting all kinds of requests for uh tours and different things like that and we're happy to do it. Because this is a, that whole watershed system that's been uh restructured up through there. It, it's really amazing and it's very, very cutting edge. So um very proud of what we've done here and um it, it's, there's a lot to show off here, so.
Thank you, Lake.
Thank you.
Alright, do we have any other department heads or elected officials? Alright, item six, minutes approval from the uh March twenty-fifth meeting. So move.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries, item seven. Nine oh five, general obligation capital loan notes uh for essential county purposes. And item B, nine oh seven, uh general obligation capital loan notes for general county purposes. We have a motion to approve the consented, uh s- uh it's a resolution uh to approve the consented agenda. Again, this is minus item eight C, which will be tabled for a week. So move.
Second.
Um uh roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item nine A, motion to direct the finance uh director to advertise for a public hearing on the purpose, uh proposed Black Hawk County budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six to be held Monday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at ten AM in Boardroom Two Oh One of the Black Hawk County Courthouse, Martinville, Iowa.
So move. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries, item nine B, resolution that each owner and each person in possession of or control of any land in unincorporated Black Hawk County shall uh be herbicide sprayed, cut, burnt, or otherwise destroyed, all noxious weeds thereon as defined in chapters uh three seventeen point one A and twenty-one and section fifty-eight point four at such time in each year uh and in such manner as, as shall prevent uh said weeds from blooming and coming to maturity and shall keep said land free from such growth of any other weeds as shall render the streets or highways adjoining said land unsafe for public travel. Noxious weeds shall be cut and otherwise destroyed on or before June first, twenty twenty-one, sorry, twenty twenty-five and as often thereafter as is necessary to prevent said production and direct the publication of the notice in the official newspaper of Black Hawk County.
So move. Second.
So resolution?
This is just our annual notice that we sent out, or we're giving notice to landowners, farm owners, et cetera, that they should eradicate weed, weeds. The weeds are listed in the actual code section three seventeen. There's the ten weeds and then ten more weeds are listed as well. So uh this is our annual notice. Can I answer any questions?
Is this for everything on their property, even like their backyard and grassy area?
Yes, it's, it goes beyond the right, the county right of way. And it, and it also would apply in the city limits as well because these are noxious weeds. So everywhere is, if you're named for a weed commissioner, for the county weed commissioner to go out and if, if someone calls in a notice that they seed these weeds, then the weed commissioner has a duty to go investigate those for the code.
Alright, was the resolution? Uh roll call please.
Leland.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item nine C, motion to approve the personnel ac- uh requisition submitted by, uh sorry, submitted for an office specialist position, full-time replacement is recommended by Linda Intiman, county attorney.
So move. Second.
Any questions?
Alright. Uh it's a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same side, motion carries. Item ten A, nine oh five, hearing on the proposed issuance of not to exceed one million, five hundred and sixty thousand in general obligation capital loan notes for an essential county purpose uh on matters, sorry, ECP dash one on the matters uh of the issuance of not to exceed one million, five hundred and sixty thousand general obligation capital notes uh to provide funds to pay the cost of public buildings, including the site or grounds of and the erection, equipment, remodeling, or reconstruction of, and additions or extensions to the buildings, including remodeling, reconstruction, and equipment of the courthouse for essential county purposes. We have a motion to receive and place on file, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. We have a motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received. So move.
Second.
Uh all in favor of that motion? Say aye.
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 All the same side, motion carries, resolution uh instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed one million, five hundred and sixty thousand general obligation bonds.
So move.
Uh some motion.
Second.
Thank you, uh resolution, uh so roll call please.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item B, uh hearing on the proposed issuance of not to exceed one million, five hundred and sixty thousand in general obligation capital loan notes on the essential county purposes, ECP two on the matter of the issuance of not to exceed one million, five hundred and sixty thousand general obligation capital note, loan notes uh to provide funds to pay the cost of public buildings, including the site or grounds of, and the erection, equipment, remodeling, or reconstruction of, and additions or extensions to the buildings, including equipment and remodeling at the courthouse due to IT relocations and the remodeling, reconstruction, and equipment, uh equipping public buildings and facilities, including Pinecrest, the Sheriff's Office, maintenance buildings, and shops, conservation administration, administration offices, Veterans Affairs Court Services, and the jail for essential county purposes. We have a motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, uh motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments.
So move. Second.
That motion is second, any oral or written? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, resolution instituting the proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed one million, five hundred and sixty thousand general obligation bonds.
So move.
Uh motion and second, roll call please.
Brant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item C, hearing on the proposed issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars in general obligation capital loan notes on the general county purpose, GCP three on the matter of issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar general obligation capital loan notes to provide funds to pay the cost of acquisition and development of land for a public museum, park, parkway, preserve, playground, or other recreation or conservation purposes uh to be managed by the Black Hawk County Conservation Board, including uh lake restoration, signage, and park improvements for general county purposes. We have a motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication.
So move.
So have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments, so move.
Second.
Any comments?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar general obligation bonds. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, this is a resolution, roll call please.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item D, hearing on the proposed issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars in general obligation capital loan uh notes on the general county purpose, GCP four on the matter of the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars general obligation capital loan notes to provide funds to pay the cost of the acquisition and development of land for a public museum, park, parkway, preserve, playground, or other recreation or conservation purpose to be managed by the Black Hawk County Conservation Board, including wetland conservation park and recreation improvements for general county purposes. We have a motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication.
So move. Second.
Uh all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh motion to close after um oral and written comments.
So move. Second.
Any comments? Uh all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, resolution instituting proceedings uh to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar general obligation bonds.
So move. Second.
The motion is second, roll call please.
Leland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item E, hearing on the proposed issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars in general obligation capital loan notes for a general county purpose, GCP five on the matter of the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar general obligation capital loan notes to provide funds to pay the cost of the acquisition and development of land for a public museum, park, parkway, preserve, playground, or other recreation or conservation purposes to be managed by the Black Hawk County Conservation Board, including park paving uh projects for general county purposes. We have a motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication.
So move. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we have a motion to close after uh hearing oral or written comments.
So motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
No written comments.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh do we have a resolution instituting proceedings uh to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar general obligation bonds?
So move. Second.
This is a resolution, roll call please.
Brant.
Yes.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item F, hearing on the proposed issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars in general obligation capital loan notes for general county purpose, GCP six on the matter of uh the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar general obligation uh loan note uh to provide funds to pay the cost of the acquisition and development of land for a public museum, park, parkway, preserve, playground, or other recreation or conservation purposes to be managed by the Black Hawk County Conservation Board, including park facilities improvements for general county purposes. Do we have a motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication?
So move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, uh do we have a motion to close the hearing after comments?
So move. Second.
Any comments?
No comments.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action uh for the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand dollar general obligation bonds. So roll call please. Oh, we need a motion.
Second.
Leland.
Yes.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
No drawing, dear guys, yes. Uh hearing on the proposed issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand, five hundred dollars on general obligation capital notes for a general county purpose, GCP seven on the matter of the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand, five hundred dollars general obligation capital loan notes to provide funds to pay the cost of the acquisition and development of land for a public museum, park, parkway, preserve, playground, or other recreation or conservation purpose to be managed by the Black Hawk County Conservation Board, including erosion control at the Harton Reserve for general county purposes. Do we have a motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, motion to close after comments.
So move. Second.
All, any comments?
No comments.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a resolution uh instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed four hundred thousand, five hundred dollars general obligation bonds?
So move. Second.
Roll call please.
Brant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Almost.
Do we have a resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation uh capital loan notes uh series twenty twenty-five, a levy attached for the payment thereof?
So move.
Alright, this is a resolution, uh roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes.
Kurtback.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Drink.
Yeah. I didn't say another. Alright, work session, item eleven, uh discussion possible board action for all aspects of the FY twenty-six budget. Um item one is the review board requested information.
Yes, and we, we actually did most of that during the hearing, so I don't doubt you want to talk about it again, but I will show you it, correct? The one that was wrong, because you and I hit that button. I wish I didn't realize that last night, but I did. So, the very bottom of the page, um for a residence located in the city of Waterloo, but in the Cedar Falls School District, um I've adjusted that now to get. And now, this is the wrong one.
I was gonna say one.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, come on.
I did fix it. I'm, this is not gonna be as pretty, but hopefully you can see it. Let's see if I can. Or I can zoom it, so. There we go, that's a little better. Alright, see this Cedar Falls, uh city of Waterloo and Cedar Falls Schools, you, um we've got the Waterloo school taxes now at a six ninety. R two sixty seven for county taxes and a thousand seventy seven for city of Waterloo. So that is an increase of sixty nine dollars in total, and then um the county's portion of that would be eighteen point six four percent. That's why it's difficult to talk about the county's portion of the increase, because as you can see, it is a huge variety here, depending on what the other taxing bodies are doing. And then, yeah, that was the only change, just one number on there was wrong, but it didn't work, so. Yeah, so the other things to talk about today is. Well, let's, let's jump ahead to trying to set the sale date, because we're trying to get that into Sphere's schedule and then on auction schedule. So, May twenty seventh, I believe is a Tuesday, May twenty ninth is a Thursday, the twenty seventh would be the Tuesday after Memorial Day. And I have to have four people, there'll be a meeting probably at one o'clock, but I ha- I need four of you to attend to approve awarding the sale.
What, you said, May twenty seventh?
May twenty seventh or the twenty ninth, and I, do you wanna do a?
Either or, either one is fine for me.
I think I'd prefer the twenty seventh, but if I could make the twenty eighth worth it, I'd need to.
I've got a, I've got a conflict on the twenty seventh, but if, as long as we get four.
And it's Tuesday.
Yeah. Yeah, the closer you get to the holiday weekend, it's.
Yeah, that's what, I know, it's hard that week, yeah.
It just needs to be separate from our, for me.
Well, because it'll have to be at one o'clock, so we, the sale will likely be in the morning, um hopefully, and we'll have a short meeting so that I can get to the sale. Um, that's usually an online auction you do in the morning, then Sphere needs some time, they've gotta calculate the bids and verify them before we can award. So generally, we try to have a meeting around one to, that I need you to be back here at to award that.
Are you, it's at one o'clock, you said?
I think so.
Oh, I can do one o'clock at the twenty seventh, yeah.
So, is everybody good for the twenty seventh?
So it's one mark.
Rich.
You're rich, yep, alright.
So we'll assume the twenty seventh? Alright.
One, yeah.
Alright, thank you, then determining the bond issue amount, we probably have about another week if you're not ready to do that today. I know I'm, I'm getting some random questions sometimes about whether to delay a project. So if you really need to delay some projects, I kinda need to know which today, so I can calculate some things. The resolution that you just passed does set the first year's principal repayment at five hundred and eighty thousand. Um, we could probably amend that next week if we really need to, um but that amount is what gets, brings us back up, so that we're at a fairly level levy rate for the next several years, which is why. Not that we can't change it, that's just how I tried to design the debt service repayment plan. Doesn't mean we need to do all of these projects, so that's, we just need to sort that out if you want that to be different than the five million. And it, it'll adjust slightly, probably on sale day too, depending on what happens there. So. That is.
I, there's not anything I'm interested in delaying at this time, because they're all, I view them all as projects that are gonna need to happen. And so to, in order to keep on our kind of schedule and our goal of keeping this, this level, if we're delaying them, then we're gonna end up with a year that. Also, we gotta do a bunch of stuff that we push down the road.
And there wasn't any staff that was, had brought up the issue of delaying anything, that they?
No, not to, not to me.
Okay.
It was just, just supervisors.
Just asking.
Yeah.
Look, everything, everything's gonna get cheaper for the future, so um.
Yeah, if anything, I would've built all, everything I could've eight years ago.
Yeah.
The, the only thing I would say, just the board area, the remodel, what was that, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, nine fifty, or almost a million bucks?
Yeah, I think it's in that, in this issue at eight hundred for actual construction, yeah.
Maybe that's, that's the only thing I can take issue with, just because it's so high, I understand that it would be more expensive. Before, I'm just trying to look at the cost versus benefit. Uh especially as we're in this, this prime time, we're having conversations behind the scenes to figure out some other revenue streams. Uh with the jail and what that might look like down the road. I don't know, not that it matters, but that's just kinda where I stand on the board.
Delay, you mean kind of awaiting for any?
Yeah, I, I just, having a hard time understanding the, how, what's the big benefit of, in the big picture?
In the big picture, it's to provide you with a lobby, kind of, again, and I, we haven't, we don't have a sketch, so I don't know what it would look like, but it's to allow the staff to have. Offices and use the space better.
Right.
Um, I think we can probably have a conference room for your use, that would be the purpose of doing it if we do it, and or, and also to hopefully. Improve the H E C in that area, because that hasn't been touched.
Right, right, right.
The other.
We're open window.
Yeah, well, the other side of that, the other side of that, I'll, I'll, I'll share, you know, on a personal note, going through the stuff that I went through a year, almost a year ago now. Uh, that office is sort of uniquely set, that exposes five very public facing elected officials um with no real security barrier. And so I've, I've got, I've got, I've shared that with, with Rory, I've got some legitimate concerns about how exposed we are in that space. Uh, and I think just having folks in a work, in a better works, a dedicated workspace, I think is important. Uh, but having us have a little bit more hard line uh somehow in that space, I think is important. Everyone else, ev- everything else has a counter, that, that some of them have to get through if they wanted to, right now. Uh, but we've had some. Interactions, I think, um with some members that, that could've gotten a lot superior than, than they did thankfully, but, yeah.
And I'd be eager to get the, the conference room back, I said that small, having a con- conference room small for all of us, but all of the others too that need small conference rooms. We've kinda used up the space for Gabby's office, that was what was my conference room at one time, and made room for Joe out there in front, but it's really not an office area. And so, yeah, Rory's still got such a very small insignificant spot there too, so that's part of it, is just kinda getting back to several features and then improving it.
Well, I think we've also talked about if there are opportunities for other departments to really, so it's not just a board office, but it is an administrative office, and I think that there. Depending on where those conversations go, there's some, some good potential, I think to, for additional synergy between those departments. Um, which I think is ultimately beneficial for everybody, whether it's folks that are currently in the basement or elsewhere, to move in.
I think it's just been labeled B O S, because we're there now, it's gotta be some kind of a change we're looking at, but it was looking at H R at one time.
Yep.
Kind of moving, I T is the first piece, but was H R gonna be there or not, or someone else or not, and us as well, so.
We've got the, we've got, we've got a issue now, not issue, but we've got H, uh I T moving across the hall, and now we've got an opportunity.
Does that wing kind of what we can do with it, and it may be for us, I guess.
Yeah. I mean, it's more than just us.
Could be, it's like open minded, keep an open mind and see what, what works for you.
On the, on the security issue, I assume we'll be going in a better direction for the courthouse going forward, fairly soon anyway. I know that's just a small, small piece, but I apologize, I decided, I don't know the details of the situation, I do, I still don't know the details of what, whatever. Uh, but I can, I can appreciate the, where you're coming from.
And it unfortunately hasn't been just Tavis.
Yeah.
It's like I had death threats, breakbait on my front door, random calls, every, you know, the whole, damn it, you know, um unfortunately.
Um, so on the issue, on the bond issuance issue, do we, do we want to, are we comfortable moving forward, um?
What do you need from us?
What, yeah, what do you?
What do you need from us to?
I will look ahead, assuming we're doing five million unless you vote otherwise, plus that.
Uh, we've already set the date, do we have other items to discuss in the budget work session?
Um, there's one thing I want to bring up that we've been working on, um, Tim and Mandy and I have been working on health insurance. I, I am planning to bring you about a five percent reduction in the medical that will reduce our tax asking. At the April twenty first hearing, so I just wanted you to know that's there, I don't have a lot of the calculation done yet, because I wanted to keep up this presentation today instead of waiting. Which I'm glad I did, I didn't know we were having so many guests today.
So are you planning to send that to us, like, you know, next week or something, or whatever?
Yeah, yes, so we know if it's ready, we can potentially look at a work session for that next week if we want to, and it's ready to go. That otherwise, I think, I think we're slowly grinding our way to be ready to pass the budget, so, that's good.
I told Michelle yesterday too, I had an idea to generate some app revenue, but I work on that a little bit before I share with everybody. So just looking for ideas, you know?
Excuse me, the other thing, uh to maybe think of something. Uh, county traffic ordinance, um I know I've spoken briefly with Mike about that, but perhaps that's something we could explore. Um, I don't know if that needs to be as a work session, I know you've got some things you still gotta look into, I believe, but.
But what it uh was though, too, is right now, um, we don't have our own traffic ordinances outside of Jake Gray coordinates. And we can enforce state licenses, maybe a percentage, I don't remember what the percentage is, I don't know if I talked to Nate about it. We get a percentage of the fine, it's, it's not really very much.
I think it dropped fifteen, ten fifteen percent.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds correct, I don't wanna say I heard twelve or something, but yeah, they, uh, the bottom line is. By switching into local ordinance, then we would get, I think we get all of it then, and I think that's what the city of Waterloo generally does. Real question is how many of them we actually issuing, and, and they'd say, it's, you know, probably a dot, something, it's, you know, similar to what Waterloo does, or similar to what the state has. But uh, but with the, if being in my county could go ahead and collect more of those, and I talked to Nate briefly, but, uh, timer being about something else, it's gonna be a brief portion of our conversation.
So in the event, in the event that one had a traffic violation, they would pay, let's just assume that we would set our rate that to practically mirror the states. Would it, would, would the person who violated uh the traffic measure, would they pay the same amount of money, it would just be, does it go to the state or does it come to us?
No, we would pay on top of, well, we would have to set it within the constraints of the fines for violations, some fractions, I think it could be thirty one. What I need to figure out is where you can enforce it, it might be limited to uh county roads and rural areas or where. And I, I don't know if we could enforce it in cities, um don't think you could probably enforce it on, on state or U S highways, I think those would need to be controlled by the state, but I would have to look further.
What's the fine?
There is some question about it though, too, because I know like, so you see the happens, go, let's just try to, you know, they had cameras for years, and they still do have a couple of them down there.
I guess where I'm going with my question is, if someone is pulled over on a county road, if we had our own set of rules. Would their, just for the sake of conversation, their ticket that would be a hundred dollars now, would it still be a hundred dollars? Then it would just, that hundred dollars would come to us, or would it be a hundred dollars plus whatever our fine is?
I believe it would be just a hundred dollars, is my understanding, but I've still got some learning to do on this one, but it is, that's my understanding.
Be nice to.
Well, you said we get ten or fifteen percent right now, but what if ten or, ten or fifteen percent of what?
Of the fine amount.
Well, what is the fine amount?
It varies from schedule violation to violation, so.
Minimum two.
And I don't have a compounding problem, obviously, but it, it, uh, equipment violations are gonna be your, your, your low, lowest cost ones, so bald tires, for example. Uh, let's say, uh, the fine amount is a hundred and thirty five dollars, so point eight five percent or point eight eight uh goes to the state, written under state code. So.
Be hard to enforce, won't it, do it fairly hard to enforce, or no?
No, no. No, I, it depends, if, if it's a complete adoption of state code, it's probably unlikely, but tinted windows, uh loud mofo, I mean, it could be anything that makes sense, and so. It, it could speed.
Yeah.
Um. Reckless, I don't know, just to name a few.
Stop line, stop time violations.
Yeah, there's tons, a lot of options, so.
Can we include if one day we wanna do traffic cameras or tra- speed cameras as well in some rural townships?
I, I don't, I don't think that that's gonna, that's, I guess, that's another state thing, so.
Could we include it if we're gonna adopt something, so it does include that, if it does come around once approved again, using the traffic cameras?
Kind of a warning, you mean?
Yeah. We got warnings in place.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would like to see it.
I got one little township that's asked about that, spooling down the traffic going through.
Cause the other thing would be for the sheriff's office, uh if, if they, and I'm not sure if they do, but have one of the mobile radar stations.
Yes.
Or maybe investing in, um, again, more expense, but uh like Waterloo has with the uh vehicle that sits out there for X number of hours. Formerly known as Rambo, uh current name, I don't know, Millie, I believe.
The, the other big revenue stream that I wanna see the board spend some time on this year is taking another look at our, our existing wind ordinance. Um, for utility level, um, wind turbines, but also utility level solar. Um, if I remember correctly, the, the, the wind project that we had approved, that um county had done properly, that was gonna be about a million dollars of tax revenue a year. Uh, which would be a game changer for this county. And so looking at ways to make the, the current wind ordinance more resilient to the frivolous appeals that bogged it down. Uh, even though we, long story short, we won every appeal, but the technology in the original application had changed enough. That by the time that they were sorting through those appeals, they're gonna have to apply again, and they decided to go to Delaware County instead. Um, and so being better positioned to get those, I especially think, um, maybe we'll be seeing less wind, but more utility level solar in the future, but being ready to, um, take advantage of those.
Alright, do we have any, uh, any reports or info from the board?
Had just a brief report back from the board of health last week, there's a lot of state legislation that they're keeping a close eye on, that, uh, things will impact everything from the reorganization to. Um, different immigration bills, like possibly, you know, um, making sure they're protected from the, uh, bill that might criminalize, you know, uh transporting somebody. Who has illegal status and all those implications. Um, and so it's, and also the, the di- the, the legislation around diversity, equity, inclusion, how that could. Impact their efforts to look at social determinants of public health outcomes, but also even our own, uh, unit committee, uh as well, so, that's a lot of fun stuff.
I wanted to follow up, I've attended both the Fox and Black Hawk Township meetings last week, meeting some wonderful people taking care of our rural areas. Got a chance to sit in on the board of health meeting, really appreciated Chris's input on that. Uh, was able to attend a soil and water conservation dinner last week and learned a lot about what's going on in our rural areas with that. Uh, I did wanna give you a heads up on item asking for item A C being postponed. Is the county writes a check to this organization, Iowa Individual Benefit Reassurance Association, about ten thousand dollars every so often. Nobody can tell me exactly what that association does or what they do with their dollars. So they do have a meeting coming up on April sixth, I'm gonna make myself available to attend that, that's what we're, uh, next week, I'll be listed as one to attend that, I'll be at Black Hawk County.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thanks everybody.